Welcome AP Physics Study Session 22217. How's that? How about we tackle a problem like this? It's a torque problem. So, let's say you have a tension here. You've got this pulley beam right here, that's the length L. But you have actually a mass here. We'll call it mass one. Just trying to see what you guys remember right? Now, let's say this is 55 degrees. Okay? And now we want to find...oh! 55 degrees? What should we do about the cord? Hmm, 55...about 45. Now, we want to find the tension in the cord. Uh, let's see. And the beam will be mass two. I don't know what to make it. What do you guys think? 50.0 kilograms? Let's make the box 25.0 kilograms. M1? That's the thought. Can you find the tension in the cord? Well, first of all, where's the pivot point? Where's O? Top? Or the bottom? Yeah, it'd be...well, no, that's the center of mass, so, right here. So, this is a beam, this is some sort of cord. So, this is O, the point of rotation, or axis of rotation. Okay? And then, there's a couple things. We're gonna assume, or I can say assume that this thing is evenly mass, this beam, right? What torques can you find? Well, the tension has one, right? So, we can go like this. So, if we sum our torques, so torque-tension. So, this is our pivot, our hand's gonna go like this, so it's positive. So, how about the torque of 1? Yeah, so it's gonna be negative. And is there a 2? Yeah. Right about here, more or less, right? In the middle, we're gonna assume the middle. So, there's an Fg, I'm gonna call it L, that's there. And we have this Fg1. So, that guy's going in the same direction as the box. So, that's gonna be a minus 2. And we're gonna just put 0 at equilibrium for now to find the tension. Okay? So, we're going this way. How are we gonna find the the angle? Yeah, see, we gotta find the angles, because see, here's our lever arm. This is our lever arm. So, from here to here is L, L length. This is tension, so we don't know that length. But so, how do we go about... Because if the force is coming here, this angle, this angle is gonna be equal to the angle of the push. How are you gonna find... There's a couple options.
This is 180 minus 90.
Alright. See, what you can do is you can make this into one little triangle. Here, that's right triangle.
The bigger triangle is...
Right, the bigger triangle is gonna be this one. 90, so... They're similar triangles, that would be it. Yeah. So, we're gonna go, what? 180 minus 90 plus 55? That will give us, I'm gonna call it theta1. Theta2, 180 minus 90. Uh, wait, are they gonna have the same angle? Are they gonna have the same angle? Life is sweet! Yeah, I said they're similar triangles. I'm nuts! That's gonna be sweet, that's gonna make life easier! I like that. Okay, so, what do we got? What ma'am? 35, thank you. 35 degrees. So, now we know what theta is, so we can deal with that later. Oh! What about for the tension? Because see, this one's going down this way, this tension's going this way. So, 180 minus 55... Oh, 180, yes. So, this is gonna be theta3. So, theta...well, that'll be theta3, so we're actually looking for theta4. So, that's, I'm gonna go 180 minus 55. And you said what? 135? I mean, 35. Yeah. Okay, and then, what is theta4? 180 minus 45 plus 135, and what'd you get? Why do we need thetas? Which one? 125? I didn't even pay attention. Okay, 125, let's change it. 125. So, that's what, 10 degrees? Is that what it is? So, that's 10 degrees, we do need those. We really, this one's not the one that's needed, it was needed to find that one up there. But now, you can write up your torques because now you can write it all in terms of each other. So, this will be T, the lever arm times L. Sin 10 degrees minus Fg1. Fg1 is L. Sin 35 degrees minus Fgl, but that's L 1/2, right? Because the center of mass, we're gonna assume is at the center, right? I didn't mention it, but we'll keep it at the center. Sin 35 degrees equals 0. And here's a very beautiful thing that's gonna occur, do you guys see it? You could, yeah, you can factor out the L. Yeah, so you could factor out the L. Gone, gone, because this is 0. And then, let's see. We want this all on the other side. So, this will be, if it's okay for me to skip some steps. It's gonna be Fg1 plus Fgl times sin 35 degrees over sin 10 degrees. And so, we write it up. That's gonna be...oh, we got 9.8, so I'll put 9.8 out. I'm gonna factor that out again. Squared. So, that's 25 plus that, 75 kilograms. And sin 35. And sin 10 degrees. So, 9.8 times 75 times sin 35 and sin 10. And how many sig figs were three sig figs? 2.43 times 10 to the third Newtons. That's okay? Torque, yeah, torque was torque equal. And actually, you, the regular physics, they don't have everything, so don't stress, okay? Right, so tor, well, Fr sine theta. You also have another one, right? Which one? It's part of the lab report, let's do. I alpha, not A. Yep, because A is acceleration, it's different, this is rotational acceleration. Okay? So, for you guys, that's what it's equal to. Yes? Oh, did I leave 2 out? I left my 1/2 out, where does it belong? Let's see, that's really bad. So, the 1/2's actually right here. There's a 1/2 there. Oh, no! So, that means this guy, um...yeah. No, this is m1, right? So, that means 50, so it's 50. Isn't it 50 kilograms? So, I said this is m1, this is FL. Um, so, and it's, it's, uh, it's... So, it's the 50 that's getting divided, that's 25, so 25 plus 25, that changes things. Well, thankfully, my Casio calculator lets me go back. Yeah, that was messed up, huh? Good call. So, 1.62. Good catch. 1.62. Cool, that's what...alright. Are you guys good at finding...so, this goes to everybody. How about fulcrum? Where to place the fulcrum? I'm gonna move into rotational after this, but I'm just gonna first do this. So, let's say a fulcrum. So, you have a seesaw. We need to know where to move this, where to place it. And I think I'm gonna do this via, just a variable, is that okay? And what we could do is we can say that this is some distance L. Okay? And what we have here is m and 2m for mass. Is that fair enough? So, letters, it still works for you, okay? Can you guys determine where to place that fulcrum? Okay? No? Okay, well, first of all, do you know where there are two forces? No? Elizabeth, do you know where there are some forces? Fg plus m. You have Fg2m. And where's the point of rotation? It'll be wherever this is gonna be at, right? So, what we can do here is you can go R, you can call it m, or you can call it 1, I don't care. And you can call this one R2, or something like that. Or you can call it R1. You guys know one thing for sure, right? You know one thing that's for sure. What else do you have? Yep, because it's gonna be balanced, so... You could, well... Okay, you could do this, I get what you're saying. So, you're gonna do this, so this is torque m. And this one, since it's going into the y축 or down, torque 2m, and they're equal to 0, so you made them equal to each other, that's cool. We can do that, we can do that. Okay? Equals torque 2m, because I brought the minus over. That works, but there's something else you know for sure. That's, see, L is equal to R1 plus R2. They're definitely for sure. So, what's sweet about...right? Kind of a system of equation, actually, it's gonna be a substitution. Because here's, yeah, this is what...yeah, so you got, it can be either one. I can go like this, R1 equals L minus R2, right? It doesn't matter which one. It's just that you need to put the correct thing, so this is gonna be... And since it's 90 degrees, we don't have to worry. So, this is Fgm. R1 equals... So, we might, we're gonna probably do some rearrangement real quick here, but that's fine. Fg2m and R2. The thing is, we know R1 is equal to this. So, Fgm, parentheses, L minus R2, parentheses. So, we can do distribution. Okay? You can also bring this over. And is it right if I factor out the R? So, if I do this, R2, parentheses, will be Fgm plus Fgm. M equals...I just rearranged. You're gonna have... Are we good? And so, R2 this will be m minus 2m over 1 over second squared, L. And this will be 2m minus 9.8 m over 1 over second squared. Uh, m plus m. Now, hopefully, you guys are beginning to see some sweetness to this. Yeah, the 9.8 cancels, so, because it factors from the bottom. This even gets better, it gets exciting for me. So, this is gone, gone, gone. I'm gonna go one more step so that you guys can see it. So, this is gonna be m over 3m over L. So, guess what cancels? Mass 1/3L. So, R2 is equal to 1/3L. And so, this one you can almost do in your head, but if you want. Here's L, which is gonna be 3 over 3L minus 1/3L. So, it's equal to 2/3L. That's just fraction. What do you think? How's that sound, you have fun? You want more torque for R? Oh, a quick RPM type thing? Okay? Uh, should I just generate one in my head for the sake of... Okay? Um... A...come on, this, yeah, a 2.0 meter ball, right? Okay, so this is the diameter of the ball, come on in. So, uh, how about... Switch that, a ball with a 2.0 meter diameter. Okay? Rolls. One more rest. Two...well, I don't know. I wanna make a weird number. So, how about, uh, 17.2 meters, okay? And 1.5 seconds, is that cool? 1.5 seconds. Seconds. Okay? So, a couple things. Let's determine how the revolutions. Let's determine, uh, the velocity, you know, at the end, and the acceleration, what the heck? I don't know, let's just try it. First of all, how you revolution? Okay, so what do you wanna do? So, she wants to get v, and so where is that gonna be? Okay. So, that's gonna be the x direction, alpha x divided by the time. 17.2 meters for 1.5 seconds. Okay, I don't know what that is, I just made all this up in my head. What, I can't hear you real loud? 11.46, I'll go over a couple decimal places. So, meters per second. Equals R. Omega equals v over R. But only one problem. We need to talk about this. Um, so, this is gonna be 11, and I'm gonna go 4.6, but we gotta go to correct sig figs. Meters per second. And divided by 1.0 meters. What? 5.7 what? 5.7 oh? Yeah, 5.7 what? Yeah. Well, yeah, well, we're not there, so... Yeah, I don't know what she got, I was going to myself too, I'm going. Okay, but what is the units here? Yeah, rads per second. That's important. Rads per second. I'm gonna make this large so people can see it on the screen. Rads per second. So, if we want um, revolutions... Yeah, so if this is gonna be in, uh, rads. So, 11 for, actually, I'm gonna go 5 for now, or 4.6, I'm gonna put in the correct sig figs. 6 rad, second, parentheses, fraction bar, rad. 2 pi. Rad is actually the unit you never see in trig, but it's there. In rad. Okay? Now, we should get something. Did you get the, that's where you got the 5 point? Oh, did you? 5.73. 5.7 rad per second. Oh, wait a minute. I didn't put a parenthesis, I didn't put a parenthesis. Yeah, let me put a parenthesis, I didn't put a parenthesis. I'm not on it today. Fail, 1.8. Fail, 1.8. Yeah, rads per second. And actually, can you figure out now how many revolutions? How many times it rolled? What? Mm-hmm. Because theta final equals theta initial. Omega t. This guy is 0, because it starts at the beginning. We already know our rads, so, um... Whoops. Yeah. And so, from this, we can find, we take that 1.8 rad second times 1.5 seconds. That make sense? 1.8 times 1.5, because that's what it did, it ended in 1.5 seconds, so... 2.5 rads. Now, you'd have to change that to pi if you wanna match up to the distance. That work? Can we find an acceleration since it's going from 0 to this velocity? Which equation? I don't wanna do it, you guys tell me, what equation? Do you use the same linear equations, but you just change all the symbols to... Omega? So, you're trying to say... That one's always nice to use. Alpha. Yeah. This one's without the time, but if you want... I know, if you want, so you can use this one? Because now we have, uh, we have 2.5. We also have it in rads, so we could use rads. And so, we get in radians, which is preferable. And then, the time, she's trying to state, go final equals initial plus alpha t. Because you do have t. That was the one that you were trying to suggest? Which one? Oh, like this? Omega initial t plus 1/2 alpha t squared, that works too. Oh, you wanna do this one? She wants this, yeah, it's the form of that other one. Like that. That's, uh, yeah, that's this middle one. So, that's this form. But there's, uh, so there's three ways to approach... But there's, uh... So there's three ways to approach it. That's kinda cool. Uh, here's a good one. What, ma'am? This is easier, you're saying? It would be easier? Yeah. Doesn't... If you... Can I take a picture of that? You know we're videotaping, so... Yeah, take a picture. Just... I just wanna make sure that if you jump in front of the screen, we have permission for you to be in public. If we don't, then you stay back there. Does it make sense? Okay. All right. Yeah, everything's working. Okay, um... I can I give you guys a... So I'm gonna give you guys an AP Level 1. Is that cool? It's rotation. It's a bunch of stuff. Are we ready? We're gonna be one with this. And it was in the notes. If people look at their notes. Okay, here we go. So let's do this one. Let's say we have a ramp. Like that. Okay? Trying to figure out what I should do. I'm gonna put numbers, okay? And then we can at least change it later. But, so let's say the height of this ramp is like, um... 25 centimeters. And let's give it a theta of 25 degrees. Sound good? Let's put... Let's put a disk here. A disk. And this disk has a mass... Oh, I'm just gonna make it 2.5 kilograms, just for the sake of... Okay? Oh, should we have the diameter of the disk? Sure, why not, right? So, uh, let's give it a... Just to make life easier. A radius of, um... 10.2 centimeters. Okay? I don't know if we need it yet. This is just gonna make life good. Okay? If we need the velocity that this thing is gonna launch off of here. So you're gonna determine this v. From that v... It's gonna fall off a little cliff, a little counter. Okay? And let's do this with this particular counter. Let's say this height is 1.5 meters. We wanna know, because that's what we want to know. We want to know the distance it will land here. What? You can do this? Because AP Physics, you need to use everything? Be glad I didn't... Be glad, be glad. Actually, I should do this. Oh, don't tempt me. I think I might now. I know what I might do, just to make me happy. Okay, ready? It's okay. It might be, it might not. I don't know. But you guys can do this one, okay? So, here's the thing. This thing is rotating. It's rolling down this, uh... Uh, ramp. Okay? It's 25 degrees, which is a good thing. And we'll know later why it's a good thing. Okay, so that's the first task, because that's gonna give us our velocity at this point. But I want you to understand. Look what's happening to this thing, how it's launching. What that is gonna give us is our v initial. Okay? See, I... There's some... So, let's deal with this. So this thing is gonna be Ug naught, potential energy at the top. And I'm gonna write down all the energies, but it's the total kinetic energy. So we got kinetic energy, uh, initial. Or I can go like this, transitional, initial. Can I put just kt for transitional? And then kr for rotational? Okay, initial plus k rotation initial. Which is sweet, because what is that, the k? These two are zero. Okay? But we do have g final at the very top here for the roll. Okay? For the rolling. And then we have kt final plus k rotational, uh, final, okay? Now, set up your equations. Yes, chief. Oh, it would... If you want, so this can... The... This has other implications, but you can actually... Once you have this leaving, you know this velocity. You can use this as a potential energy initial, and then right here, the final would be zero, 'cause it hit the ground. It's not gonna go any further. That would be another option. Yeah, you could cross it off, yeah. She's making sense, yeah. Um, the thing here is I asked location. I could've asked another thing. Wow. Why don't I save it? But okay. You... I could ask the final velocity. 'Cause you have an initial velocity that this thing is falling. You can account for the y direction. Since you know the potential energy up here, you know the potential energy down here. You could find the final velocity without using projectile motion. Projectile motion to find the distance. And then, uh, conservation of energy to find the velocity in the y direction that it hits the ground. Which you could also take, use your trig to find out, um, the velocity that, um, that it hits. Right? Actually, no, but... It's a disk. It doesn't matter, even if it were a ball. Well, yeah, wait, wait. We have to take that into account. So I took a disk. Uh, no, I have to provide those to you. Okay? Well, um, I was advised, but... Well, I was advised... Well, you should memorize, like, um... A hoop is mr squared. A disk is, uh... Was it 2mr squared? One, one half. So, see, I'm horrible at memorizing them myself. Um, and I just... Yeah, I would... I don't have the TV on, huh? I have... So we... I said a disk. I call this a disk. But, um... So we're gonna need i. Okay, so, let's set up our equation. So mgh initial equals mgh final. And this, this can be negative 25, or negative what? It's gonna move over 0.25 meters. And since this is negative, it'll all cancel out. It'll be nice. This could be zero. Either way, we could choose it. Uh, plus 1/2 m1v final squared. Plus 1/2 i omega squared. I think I would do something first before I, uh... How were you those? Uh, what I would do first, I think I would, what? Substitute? Substitute for omega, yeah. So you guys know that omega... Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Okay? So we can do that substitution. I can move this over for the sake of doing that. So this would be mg parentheses, h minus hf. Parenthesis. Well, if we just keep... We know that these are minus minus. We could just... 'Cause I got minus, but... Um, 1/2 m1v squared. Oops. Plus 1/2... Oh, what i are we gonna use? It's a disk. So it's a disk. I put the equations up there. Uh, I... Do I have a disk up there? Yeah. 1/2... What, ma'am? Squared. Let's put omega here. So this is gonna be v over r squared. So that makes life a little easier. You... What? So where what? The m's go? Yep. So... I'm just gonna put this in a different color. Gh minus hf. Um, 1/2 v final squared. Plus 1/4 plus, which is v... Oh, just v! 'Cause look, the r squared's canceled. This is enough. So we can add those. Yeah, so, uh, this is gonna be 2, 2, so this is gonna be what? 3 over 4? 3/4 vf squared. So vf at the bottom there, the ramp, is gonna be... H naught minus hf over 3, square root. So... This could be 0. Uh, bring it over. Yeah. So this is... Just to plug it in, all the minuses cancel. 9.8 meters per second squared. Uh, 0.25 meters over 3. Somebody get an answer? 1.81? Wow, cool kid. Okay? So now we know how fast it's coming off, so that's our initial velocity at this piece. So... So projectile motion. What? Vector velocity. So, what's gonna happen here is... We know this is 25 degrees. So this component that's down here is vy. So when you do this stuff, there's a couple things to deal with. What do you guys know? Can you find vx? Yeah. So vx is gonna equal what? I don't know. What? Okay. So the 1.81 meters per si... Per second, sorry. Cosine and 25 degrees. That takes care of that one. How about the y direction? Okay, and so this is not... Again, this is equal to vx final. It's constant. What about up here? What's gonna happen here? What about the y direction? What's happening in the y direction? Is gonna be what? More or less the same? What? Okay, so is it gonna be what? Is it gonna be faster or slower? Okay, faster. People forget. Yeah, I get students forgetting, and then they forget that this is constant in the x direction. So now what do we need in order to find the distance below? Yep, all three vectors. Yes, we have a gang sign. Gang sign. X, y, tangent vector. We're gonna get in trouble. I can see it. Okay, uh... T equals what? To this? Really? Really? Whoops. Thank you. There's an initial... See, normally, when we drop something, velocity is what? Zero. But this time, it's taking off with speed. So, check this out. Delta y, and I'm just using the different colors, is gonna be equal to vy naught. Okay, this guy. Times t plus 1/2 gt squared. So you have a quadratic equation to deal with. Yes. You have a quadratic equation, so... And Lyra, you got it. So 1/2 gt squared plus vy naughtyt. And here, you might wanna keep this guy negative. This velocity is going down, so keep that negative, okay? So this answer, make sure it's negative. And since this guy's coming over, it's gonna be a minus delta y, meaning this direction, the 1.5 meters, negative equals 0. Okay? I love my TI calculator. Guess what? It has... Um, it... They use a, a matrixy to find, uh... The answers, the roots. I love it. It's like, I don't know, you gotta... Whatever. I don't know. So what is t? Does somebody run it? T equals 0.637 seconds? Okay? And now you can find your distance, right? So vx naught times t, and what'd you get as an answer? Oops, don't, don't, don't do that. 1.8... 1. what, kiddo? 04 meters. Are we 2 sig figs? We're 2 sig figs, so 1.0 meters. Is this cool or what? So go find it. Yeah, now, I understand you have an initial velocity, right? So you're gonna put that in for the v squared, 'cause we're so used to dropping, we forget, okay? Is that cool or what? And that's what I like hearing. See, now you're thinking, "Oh, I got this. I know how to do this." That's what the whole... Yeah. What, ma'am? You could do the conservation of energy. It's easy, too. It's easy, too. mg, and then mgh, this height. And you know the kinetic energy, because it's... But now, in theory, it's slightly rotating downward. But we won't talk about that. It's there. Remember, I gave you a math problem, which is a valid test question, too. Uh, let's see if I can find it real quick. I'll put it up on the... Yeah, it was a problem that we did. Um, I think it's on this sheet. Let me see. Let me confirm it. It's one where, um... Yeah, uh, yeah, right here. So Giancolli, page 219, number 41. Um, and the key's on your Google Classroom. And so number 41... That... That is a valid statement, because it's got torque. But if you look at it right here, this is what I taught you at the beginning of the year, just using forces for a pulley, an Atwood machine, right? But the thing is, we have rotation, and we account for that rotation. It's in the denominator, excuse me. In the denominator, and it's an addition, i over r squared of the pulley. There is a little... A little change in that acceleration due to the pulley's acceleration, right? So in this case, it was so close that this was negligible, nearly zero, for this problem. But the thing is, it could be accounted for, and it would be fair game. No, it's just a hint for everything in life. Not just a test. My gosh. Okay? So again, for folks that are listening, Giancolli, um, I gotta bring it up. It was page 219, 220, the homework assignment. It was problem number 41. I put a key, you know, that I wrote. You guys can look that up, all right? That's a great way to think about this, because if we just let it, we never accounted for the pulley. We really never accounted for the mass of the string, too, but... It's a massless string, right? All right, um, let's do something that's a little more conservation of momentum. Like, um... Come on in. Yeah, we'll leave it by Susan's desk. Okay, I'll take care of it. So it's in there. Oh, that's a different thing. Okay, I'll be late.
Okay.
All right. I was gonna do angular momentum. Yeah. And I wanted to do conservation of angular momentum. I thought, oof. Okay. I'd have to give you this equation. Do you guys wanna do it? You sure? Okay, this will be fun. Ready? Let's have a disc. Okay, a disc. With an omega. I don't know. Let's make it easy for now. Is that cool? 105 radians per second. It's spinning fast. Yeah, I want it to be a lot. I don't know what's gonna happen. So, but this is gonna be fun. Right? So this disc is spinning in this direction. So that means it's what? Yeah, so it's gonna... Because we're gonna do up and down. Out of the board? Out of the board? This is the z direction, just for the sake. Out of the board is what? As long as you're consistent. Okay. So this is important. So let's say it's straight on, like the... And which I didn't do for you guys in each one. So it doesn't matter whether it's a... Um, I wanna make sure I'm still looking... Okay. It doesn't matter whether it's a balance, a disc spinning. You need to let the AP folks know what convention you're using, okay? Just don't say right-hand rule. So if it goes this way... Okay, my thumb's coming out of the whiteboard. So this disc... This disc is spinning like this. I need to identify that that's positive. If the disc was spinning this way... So you make a little legend, just real quick. Just jot a little legend in that into the whiteboard. So if it's spinning this way, that's negative. So you would use that for both of these. Now, this is horizontal, spinning like this, right? So this guy is spinning in this direction. So my fingers come all around. So in an x, y coordinate, a Cartesian coordinate plane, what direction is down? What? What direction is down? Negative. So make that guy minus. So let them know. So for the AP folks, I would go like this. Vertically. Negative. Positive. Just a quick little legend. So this is me looking down at it, so it's spinning this way, so it's gonna be negative. If I look up at it, it's positive, so counterclockwise. So this disc is spinning this direction. I kinda decided to make something... And well, let's give it a mass. So let's call this one omega one. Let's give omega one 1. Omega one. Uh, let's make it 11 kilograms. Okay? I just looked at this equation. I kinda wanna do this. I don't know why. So don't hate me. So I would have to provide you the equation anyway, so I will. So I got a rectangle. Okay, how about... I have a rectangle. Okay? This some thickness. Look at my artwork. Killing house, yelling at me. Okay? And that guy is gonna be spinning. Or should I not do spinning? I'm gonna do spinning. I'm gonna make it spin the other way. It's just spinning. Why can't I get it... Why can't I have a rectangle spin? I did a hoop. Yeah, for homework, you guys had a hoop. And you had a disc. So this is just a matter of manipulating equations. So the thing here is, um, I'm gonna make this 0.50 meters and this... Oh, I didn't give this guy a radius, did I? Okay? R1, 2.0 meters, just to make it fun. And so let's make this guy just a little bit smaller. So 2 meters, will this be okay? Uh, yeah, it'll be fine, whatever. Okay, so let's do this. So this guy and this guy will be 1.50 meters. So slightly smaller. Is that cool? And it's gonna spin in this direction. Okay? So let's give it a mass. Um, mass 2. I made this one 11. Let's do this 5.0. Okay, just a little lighter. Um, we have our distances. So I gotta give you an equation. It's omega. And since we made this positive, it's going this way. So omega 2, um, this guy's going 1.5? About 50.0 rad seconds. I don't know what this is gonna provide. But we need the equation. So first of all, I2 equals, um... m2a plus b, I think it says, squared. So these guys are squared, all over 12. That's the equation for that. That's the equation for that one. What's the equation for the disc? Oops, 1. Equals what? Yep, my r1 squared. Okay? So far, okay, we're good? So these are the sums of the momentum. So what's the symbol for momentum? I'm not gonna tell you. What's this? We're gonna have to find the momentum. The total momentum, these things are as conserved. It's no different than things that are gonna collide. Oh, well, why wait? Why would I have two separate things like that? Yeah, they're gonna be together. Oops. Bad picture, bad picture. Bring this around, up. And so now we're gonna have this rectangle kinda in here. 1.5, and this is 2. So that's 4. Trying to snooker me? I kinda thought about it a little bit. Okay, um, so they're gonna collapse. One's spinning one way, one's spinning the other. Okay, so here we go. L initial equals L final. I know better than that. We have L1 initial plus L2 initial equals... And here's the sweet deal to this. They're gonna have the same angular velocity. So this is gonna be L1 final plus L2 final, okay? This guy has I omega 1 initial plus I1. I2 omega 2 initial equals... And so here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna factor out the final, but it's gonna be I1 plus I2 omega final. Because they're... Yeah, they're together. And so what I've done is I made the problem hairy by putting this guy in. But then I have nothing else better to do in life. So, um, they're together. Um, I need to fix a lot on this problem. So it's just this becomes omega f equals I1 omega 1 naught plus I2 omega 2 naught over I1 plus I2. And so I made the problem hairier, but it's just because this guy is more complex. And that's the correct way to do this. I don't know where I was going. What? It is work. I would actually, if it was me, I would solve for this separately and then plug in the values, yeah. That's the way. I would do the algebra like this. I would do the algebra like this and then plug this in. Where my brain was at a second moment ago, I don't know. No, what I set up was wrong. And I went along with the ride, and I should've... It made no sense. What I did made no sense. So it needs to be fixed. I'm gonna recap everything together, okay? So, but if we have this setup, this is the way you would solve a conservation momentum. Please don't do that. Yeah? Yep. And that actually... Yeah, that was pretty lame. But there's problems with that whole issue. Okay, so we got that type of a problem. Um, I could try... Do I have a conceptual that I can give you right now? These are similar to FRCs. But, um, let me try to pick something for you, right? Here's somebody coming. Okay? So we had a issue, but we're gonna... I'll try to... Here's a... If you want, you can take a picture. But I have two objects. One's spinning in this direction, the other's spinning in the other. Um, the equations for them, I would recommend that you plug all the numbers up here, then do this setup. So this is all conservation of angular momentum. Inertia. Okay? What else would work for you girls? Um, you guys want something different? Yeah? So if I remember right, I think we're in pretty... We're in pretty big dire straits, because I think for a white dwarf, the outer shell blows out. So all that energy, the earth may be still in place, I'm assuming, possibly. But, uh, I don't think we have to worry about our sun being a dwarf. Before then, what we're gonna have is a red giant. And the calculated, uh... The calculations show that the red giant will be out to our orbit. It'll be about the same, so... Yeah, the earth will be, yeah. Either the gravitational forces will bring us just closer, but if we wanna pretend that... Just let's pretend that we're on our merry way. We're in our orbit. We'll be within the radius of the sun. So there's a couple things that are kinda a little weird to think about. What? Well, I'm hoping so. I'm... That's why I'm a teacher. My hope is that you guys do better than what we've done and move forward. And I hope that's every teacher's hope and then every parent's hope. Because if we continue in our way that we're going now, this can not be good, right? So, but the idea is that's supposed to happen in about, I don't know, 3 billion years, more or less? To be honest, if we're nice to each other, I believe we have to... I believe we will... We could do it. But violence doesn't... Isn't gonna help. Okay, um, let me see if I can find... No, that was a different thing. I, um... I have access to a bunch of old stuff, but let's try... Uh, you guys wanna look at multiple choice, or you wanna... Oh, I got some of the answers marked on some. Oh, here's a sweet one. I like this one. Can you see that? So a 5-meter... A 5-meter uniform plank mass, 100 kilograms at rest. Okay, so we know that it's 100 kilograms. It's 5 meters long at rest atop of a building. It extends out 2 meters over the edge. Show how far can a 50-gram person venture past the edge of the building on the plank before the plank just begins to tip? Okay? And so they give you several, uh... They give you several values. Okay? So this is a great... No numbers, just variables. Make sure also, for those who just came in, for the AP, you're gonna make a little legend to show, you know, which direction's positive, which one's negative in a twist or turn. The same thing applies to this particular problem, too. So the situation looks kinda like this. I found this thing online. So 5 meters this way. This plank has a mass. So the plank mp has a mass of 100 kilograms. Okay? And then there's a... There's a building or a ledge that it's hanging from. Okay? And then... And then there's a person, I guess. And we wanna know how far they can go off. This length, from here to here, is 2 meters, I guess. Right? So, first of all, where's your point of rotation? Where's your, where's your point of rotation? Yes, the edge of the building. So this is a, that becomes important, that's your fulcrum. It's not normal, it's gonna be what? Right, so here's the, there's a couple things, first of all, we know this, this... Well, let's think about a couple things, first of all, okay? Well, there's a... Yes? Okay? So here's the point of rotation, first of all, this is an evenly masked, okay? It's evenly massed, it's uniform mass, so where's the center of mass located? Okay? At the 2.5 meters, so this guy is 2 meters. So I'm gonna pretend right here. So here's our point of rotation. So our, from he, from right here to here is 0.5 meters, right? Or, how many meters to the edge of the building? 3 meter, oh, just one sig fig. Okay, so that's 3 meters. So what we have here, at this point, is we have FG plank. We know that distance, we have FG, oops. FG and, what do we call, we got, what do they call this, uh? Top of building before a person, so I'm gonna go per. So there's a person there. Okay? So we have the center of mass of the plank over there. We got the person over here, there's like, uh, what other issues do we have? Okay? Isn't the mass of the board here gonna go downward too? See this? Okay, because the board is evenly masked. Okay, so the board is evenly masked. So, at 2.5 meters for both sides, that's where FG is located. Yep. The problem is, the board is only 2 meters over. So, can we just do this torque based on the guy? And the center of mass? Should we give it a try? So in other words, we got torque, so make sure you show your, the direction, so torque this way is negative, torque this way, in this direction, is positive, quick little legend, so some are torques. So torque P is positive, torque person is negative, equals 0. Because this is our, our O is right here. And this guy's going down, okay? We use it, okay? And so, uh, so this is FG person. R, and I'm gonna just put 0.5 so that you guys can see it. The thing is, we don't know this location, FG person, and we wanna find the R person, where they're gonna be at the edge. So, person. So R person is gonna equal F, uh, excuse me, yes. Um, FGP, R, 0.5 over, uh, FG person. 9.8 cancels, right? Yeah. So, the torque, since it's turning this way, it's positive coming out of the whiteboard, since this person's going on the edge by this drawing, it's going downward, it's going into the board. So, can I even write down the mass of 50 kilogram person? So, the plank, 100 kilograms, 0.5 meters. The person's 50 kilograms. Okay, so that's gonna be 2. And this thing is saying, so this is 2, and 2 times 0.5, that's what? 1 meter. That's scary. In theory, you can go out 1 meter, is that one of our answers? 1 meter is one of our answers. Do you wanna look at the key? I think I have a key. If I don't, oh well, right? What problem is this number 7? Number 7 says 1 meter. So we did it. That would be freaky, wouldn't it, to walk on a board? I don't think I would, what? You wanna test it as a lab? Oh, well, wait, we could do something similar. We take a meter stick, right? And we can do something proportional, and use the little weights here that are comparable to a person, and see if we go out that far. What, the J-club? Using a wrench? I wanna do it. We need to do it, maybe after the test, if we have time. I, I may try, I should try. Well, I don't, I don't, I want, I want, yeah, I should buy 2. If I can afford to, yeah, maybe I'll do it. I will use a, maybe I'll get a melon. Yeah, she's all, yeah, melon. What? Hang on. Go, go ahead, what is it? Okay, so this torque is positive, his is negative, it's going in, or hers, that doesn't matter. So, does that, feel good about that? Okay, so that, that was actually a really good problem, wasn't it? Uh, I can't, well now, this is where we try not to take way too long, right? Cause these are, this is a good example, oh, look at this. Yeah. Yeah, the wagon wheel, and an arrow. Okay? I have, let's, I don't even know how to attempt this one, let's read it and try it. Ready? Okay, a wheel of radius R, negligible mass, yay, doesn't, so we don't have to worry about its rotational inertia, is mounted horizontally on a frictionless axis, axle, so that the wheel is in vertical plane. 3 small, uh, what is it, 3 small objects have a mass of M, M, and 2M, respectively, so that's pretty interesting. Are mounted at the, at the rim, as shown, if, oh! 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 Okay? Oh! Okay, you ready? Respectively are mounted on the rim, as shown, if the system is static equilibrium, what is the value of M in terms of big M? That is a great little setup. So I'll, I'll actually put this on the whiteboard so that other folks can see it, okay? Well, I know that, but I'm trying to be nice and sharing. Okay, ready? So here's the deal, quite, the thing, the statement is this, we got a wheel, and, um, it has 6 slices. So, that's 6 slices, that means this is 60 degrees. Okay? And there are these masses that are placed in different locales. So there's 1M, 2M, a capital M, so forgive me for my Ms, capital M. Another mass at M, and then a little mass, lowercase m, is placed over in this location. And so what we wanna find, so the rotation is about this axis right here in the middle. So we have a torque. So we're gonna sum our torques, but we now have some angles. Okay? The sweet deal is, these 2 are what? What's the angle for these 2? Yeah, they're 90 degrees, they're tangent to the, to the circle, and they're perpendicular, it's only this one that's gonna be a chain. So we sum our torques. Okay, so, and again, make our legend. This torque is negative. Torque positive, or you make a note to let the AP folks know that's in, with, or what direction. So this one goes down. Down, so torque lower M, positive. Torque big M, positive. Plus torque 2M, and we're gonna make this 0, cause I think they want equilibrium, static, yep, static equilibrium. Okay? Fortunately, R is the same for all of them. This is gonna be good news. So we're gonna have FG little M, R, sine 90 degrees, not a big deal. Uh, wait, this one's positive, that one's negative. I didn't catch that, this one's negative, it's going downward. Okay? So, uh, plus FG big M, R, sine, whoops, sine what? What direction is FG going? Not 90. Look at it carefully, what direction is it going? It's going downward, but it has a what? If this is 60, what must that be? 30. So it's gonna be sine 30 degrees. And it's positive. Now, I'm, since I know this is negative, so this is gonna be FG 2M, big M, sorry. I'm gonna keep this as sine 90, I don't have to worry about, cause I made this negative, using the right hand rule, I made the determination. So this is gonna be negative. It's gonna be equal to 0. Oops, I forgot R. Sweet deal's out, R factors out, so it's 0, I mean, it's 0, it, it cancels, not 0. So it cancels out, divides into 0. Okay? And, guess what? 9.8 disappears. I'll just do that so that you can see it. So, here's, I'm just gonna go MG sine 90, this is just for the sake, so that you guys see this. Big MG sine 30. Are you beginning to see what I'm writing down? So the Gs also disappear. Okay? And so, this is just 1. Big, uh, big M, see, I'm horrible with Ms, I wish they would do different. M. So what's sweet to this is that these 2 add up. Oh no, they don't. We're gonna factor out the M later. So, to write this, this is 1, that's 1, so this is a 1, this is a 1. So M equals, so we're gonna bring everything over for the sake of getting this done, so this is gonna be 2M plus MG sine 30 degrees. A minus, thank you. Minus. And so, in terms of M, um, oh, we have a fraction, good. So, what's the fraction for sine 30? Oh, come on, good. Not pi. Well, you guys forgot. It'll be provided to you on the test. But, 1 half. So, 2M minus 1 half M. So what is that gonna be? 2 over 2, 4 over 2. Are you guys? 3 halves, uh, M. So, C. What, you have no faith, grasshopper? So that was number 10. 3 over 2. No faith. Same deal. Uh, see, that one, okay, so that was from the homework, so this particular problem is from the homework, but each, each force is perpendicular. It just gave you an out, an angle to throw you off, and here, the force is perpendicular, so you can pull out that worksheet. This problem, it's not that, so what's happening here, let me put it in red. So FG here, FG M comes straight down, tangent to the circle. This one's tangent to the circle also, 2M. This guy is not tangent, it's dropping straight down, this is not rotating, remember, it's in equilibrium. There are applied forces. So, there's a problem where a pulley is rotating, the bucket's going down. That pulley, that, the bucket is perpendicular to the axis, but the force being pushed to keep the thing from spinning with a hand on top of it, that's also perpendicular, because you're pushing in this direction. So as the wheel's rotating, right? You're pushing back on the wheel. Okay, downward, you're pushing downward and back, cause you want it to, so it's 50 Newtons this way. But if it was at an angle... A pulley problem? Like the bucket one? So she wants to take a picture. And I need to stop at some point. Because this needs to be rendered, I need to do some work. The regular physics, I have their test. And then I have to worry about... What's wrong with you? Complaining, that you have an heft? Yes? Oh, have you ever failed a test yet? I don't see that. That maybe, the way you got, that looks like vicious, that looks like a heft. That maybe, the way you got, that looks like vicious, that looks like a heavy metal symbol, what the Jake? Her brother, which, is this the brother that plays the piano gloriously? Yeah? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna head to the next one. So you wanna do like a crazy pulley, so...
I'll give you the problem.
No, I'm making up something. Okay? So what would be nice is to, we got a pulley here, okay? And we have, oh, some sort of mass here, m. And so let's say m1, for the sake, is equal to 5.0 kilograms, okay? And there's a tension here, just for the sake of having a tension there. And so this guy decides to rotate in this direction, so we're gonna make sure AP folks and other folks in the universe know that that is a negative direction. All right? A force is applied this way to slow it down, a braking force. This thing is just falling by gravity. Now let's say that this braking force is maybe like 10.0 Newtons. Okay? Well, let's find out the acceleration that this thing is going downward, you know? Let's find, what else could we find? Um, the particular problem I gave you, it says... I think I have... So what is the speed of the, oh yeah! So we can find the speed of the bucket as it falls, with this... You wanna try to find the tension of this thing? You can. Uh, so we got a couple things. So the radius of this pulley, just for the sake, uh, what would be a good radius for the pulley? 2 meters? That's a big pulley. 2 meters, so I should do smaller, but smaller. 35 meters. Small. Okay, it's got this big mass, so it's a heavy thing. Uh, the distance this guy falls? Wow. How just about 1.2 meters, just to, it falls 1.2 meters, okay? And so we wanna know the velocity at the bottom. Well, the sweet deal here is, you have a sum of torques, that's your first task. And the reason that we want sum of torques, okay, is that we can actually find the angular acceleration. Cause this thing is a disc. And so here's the deal, we have the applied torque, okay, which is positive. We have the torque due to gravity, which is negative. It's going down that way. The sweet deal to this thing also is that I equals alpha. So you need to understand that torque is I alpha, is part of your lab. We're gonna find the velocity that it hits the ground. So the cool thing is, we're gonna end up with an angular velocity, and we're gonna convert that angular velocity to velocity. So this is a great question, this is a doing task. Okay, but I need you guys to understand that torque is Fr sine theta, I said this earlier in the video, and that I alpha. Are we good? So we have the applied force, which is nice, we have this radius, so this is gonna be F applied times r, minus Fg times r, and alpha over I. What does I equal? It's for a disc. Yeah. So I equals 1 half mr squared. This is good that you guys remember stuff like that, cause a hoop is mr squared, a disc is 1 half mr squared. Just makes life a little easier, just to have some things in memory. They, they're gonna provide you the equations like they would provide you the sine. Okay, so r factors out anyway for the sake of doing this. So we're gonna have 10.0 Newtons minus, uh, 5.0 kilograms, 9.80 meters per second squared, parenthesis, parenthesis, and r is 0.35 meters all over I. So 1 half, this guy is what's, uh, this guy's what's spinning, so I did not give it a mass. So what do we wanna give this guy? We should give this guy a mass. So mass, disc, should be, oh, what? 5? I'm just gonna make it simple, 2.5 kilograms. Okay? So after this, so one thing I should label here, that's d for the disc, cause it's inertia of the disc. So 2.5 kilograms, um, its diameter, or its radius, excuse me? Oh. Yeah. Its radius is 0.35 meters, wait, is that gonna cancel? Square. So let's see if these units all work out nicely. Uh, this has kilograms, kilograms are gonna cancel, this has meters, one of the meters is, uh, meter squared, meter squareds are gonna cancel, seconds, yep, it works. So let's do our math. Parenthesis 10, minus 5 times 7.8, I could've done 5 times 10. Don't forget to square things. And this is good. It's giving me a negative. Double check my work, please. And I'm gonna go, uh, 1 extra sig fig, 0.91, rads per second squared. Well, the, yeah, one of the Rs will be on the bottom. Yeah. And that helps work out all the rest. So that's how many rads per second? And so if you wanna find the velocity, right? Since we know L, or we know this, uh, actually, we could, should convert this to acceleration, okay? A equals alpha r. And so we can determine the acceleration that this is falling. And now that we know the distance height, we can do v initial, v final, and we can find the velocity. So in other words, A equals this. 0.1 rad seconds, 0.35 meters. I'll just put it right there. Right? So times 0.35, oops, 31.2, negative 31.2, meters per second squared. Seems a little high. But that's because of this wheel, it's rotating that fast. Would translate, so that guy, and then, um, p final squared equals v initial squared plus 2A, and that guy's gonna, and then since it's downward, so this is negative, this is negative, 1.2 meters. Okay, that's 0. So 2 times 31.2 meters per second squared, 1.2 meters. Let's see if the velocity is ridiculous. 2 times 31.2 times 1.2, 8 meters per se, yeah, that works. So that's fair. 8.7 meters per second. So it does work out reasonable. Yes, ma'am? Yes, I square rooted it. Yeah, I square rooted it. I, on the calculator, I squi, I should've put that over. So that worked. So that was a good question to ask. Okay, so I will try to end the video. Have a good night, study physics.